So we have this public hearing tonight, February 8th. We have another that's scheduled for this Thursday. That meeting will follow a, what we call a system oversight meeting that starts during the day. The public hearing will remain at 7:00 PM. On February 19th, we have added a board work session. And that day, we are hoping to really flesh out whatever proposals, whatever alternatives have come forth. And the board will pretty much spend all day, or as much time as necessary, to deal with those issues. That is a Saturday, it's scheduled to start at 9:00 AM. You're welcome to come. On February 24th, we do have on the schedule, proposed budget adoption, in whatever format the board finally adopts it, prior to sending it to the county council. Dr. Height? Clarification? Special Ed transportation?
Oh, yeah, so the, I think there was a question about specialty center transportation, and it does apply to lotteries and testing, it does not apply to special education. I think that was a question.
Thank you, thank you. So we want that clarification. Okay, our first registered speaker is Brandon Foskey, 4th grade student at Accra-Keeke Academy. As Brandon is coming forward, our security is in the building. I mention that because we obviously have fire code regulations that we have to adhere to. So we ask that you keep the doorway as best as you can, as best you can, keep the doorways open as necessary. And as seats become available, we ask that you take advantage of those seats. Brandon, hi Ms. Foskey.
Good evening Prince George's County Board of Education. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Brandon Foskey. I am a 4th grade honor roll student at Accra-Keeke Academy. I come to you tonight and ask that you not change or take away my school music program. This is my first year taking music lessons at school, and I am learning how to play a French horn. I am learning how to read music and how to play songs too. I really enjoy my music lessons. Mr. Brian Bender is a very good teacher. The first song that I played with my French horn was "Happy Birthday" from my mom on her birthday in October last year. I performed in my school's winter concert for the very first time. Dr. Julian Richards is my music teacher. I love learning and singing the songs that she teaches us. I sometimes sing the songs that I learn when I am cleaning my bedroom or while doing homework. Music is a very special part of my time while in school. I hope to one day play in Mr. William Lake's concert and marching band at Wind Park High School. Maybe one day I will play in an orchestra and get performances at the Kennedy Center in Washington DC, or Carnegie Hall in New York City. Please do not take my music programs away, because there is still a lot I want and need to learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foskey.
Good evening. I am commanding officer of Sutler High School. My name is Nathisia Brooks. Will all persons on behalf of JRTC please stand? What's the purpose of ROTC, you all may ask? See, I'll tell you. ROTC has many purposes. To develop citizenship and patriotism, to develop leadership, character, and responsibility, and to also develop a sense of accomplishment. See, I don't stay here to fight for ROTC for the county, but I stand to fight for the ROTC at Sutler High School. The NJROTC at Sutler High School has been around for 28 years. The unit there has thrived and have produced a tremendous amount of, excuse me, a tremendous amount of undecided but now motivated and successful cadets. I myself love ROTC. The program has impacted my life as a whole and me as a person. My shipmates and I have created a bond so close that our ram navy is now considered a family. We are dedicated, responsible, and motivated leaders who are proud to wear this uniform through the halls of Sutler High. Many students look up to us and often imitate our walk, our attention stance. We sometimes parade through the walkways just to show off our knowledge of military bearing and the discipline instilled in us through our instructors. See, we aren't just first-year cadets who are now grasping the concept of NJROTC, but we are second, ongoing, third, and fourth-year cadets who look forward to the rising population of potential cadets, who look forward to graduating with the NJROTC stash, and to look forward to coming back years from now and passing down the values, discipline, and courage that was once instilled in us to the ones to soon be in our position. So I ask today, why take that away? What's your purpose? Is it as good as mine?
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Gina Walls.
Good evening. I am Cadet Captain Gina Walls from Fairmont Heights High School. I am also the battalion commander and chairman of the Junior Cadet Advisory Staff, also known as J-CAS, of Prince George's County. I am here to address why JRTC should not be limited to Prince George's County, let alone be taken away. As a leader and as a child, I have seen what JRTC can not only do for the student, but for the teachers and the parents as well. JRTC is not a program, but we are a family. Cadets and cadre from all over, we come to conferences and we sit and we talk and we play and, well, I wouldn't say gamble, but we actually sit and we realize what we do. All we do is we give out ideas for the better today and tomorrow. In JRTC, you can learn that anything is possible. I always thought that JRTC was about the military and the people in it, but no, it uses the military to guide us into a positive way of life. JRTC is a program of growth and development. We not only drill and march, but we actually talk about real-life situations and how to deal with them at our own terms. As we sit and we talk about JRTC, it realizes what it means to us and what it means to everyone. I can honestly say that if I were not in JRTC, I would not be here talking to you all today. For example, two years ago, I was a student at Fortsville Military Academy. I was troubled and I needed help. I was hurting angry because my home life was a catastrophe. Every time I walked through the door, it was like something was closing on me. Because I received no help, I held on all my anger and I lashed out. My anger boiled inside of me that I placed my hands on a Prince George's County employee. I was kicked out of school. Three months, I fought, tried to figure out what can I do to become a better person. Mr. Brooks from the board told me that if I give you a second chance, would you stay in ROTC? My answer was yes. And then after this, I agreed and I enrolled myself to Fairmont Heights High School. I can honestly say my personal pain was still there, but I have grown more of a person and a leader becoming at Fairmont Heights. The JRTC instructors and cadets took me in and made me as part of their family. They have helped me, trained me, and just molded me into the person that you see before you today. Because of JRTC, my grade point average has shot up from a 1.0 to a 3.7. JRTC is not like any other course. It does the students, it does the students harm to not be in harm's way every day.
Good afternoon to everyone of Prince George's County School Board. My name is Cadet Colonel Saleah Mustafa, and I currently attend Eleanor Roosevelt High School, and I am the corps commander. And I'm talking about JRTC, not only just for my school, but for all the schools. First and foremost, I'd like to say JRTC is a very valuable program for Prince George's County Schools, for high school students. Our goal and our mission is to build better citizens and to mold models for tomorrow. We don't have a lot of programs like that in the, in high school at all. So JRTC is a very valuable program. What effect does JRTC have, not only on the cadets, but on the community? We talk about leadership skills, character education, community service. We do a color guard for the Board of Education. Without us, there would be no color guard. So we are very valuable to the community. We do parades. A lot of the community service hours that we have, we acquire from JRTC, which is one of the graduation requirements. So if you take that away, there's one avenue right there that we have that we cannot fulfill our graduation requirements. Also, we also, ROTC helps provide scholarship opportunities for many cadets who may not be the best academic person, but they are good at leading and character education. So they want to enlist in the military, they want to go up and be an officer in the, excuse me, in the United States military. So we offer scholarships with that as well. What effect does the new proposed changes have? If I'm not mistaken, Oxon Hill currently has the biggest cadet corps, which is 700 cadets, if I'm not mistaken. And Air Force is, we have more Air Force units within the county. If you take away more Air Force units, or any, any units across the board, what happens to the rest of the cadets that want to have JRTC classes? My question is, how would you get cadets to, to and from these schools? It will also cost more money for you to bus students to get to these particular schools, which is more money, and you're, you're trying to eliminate costs and cut costs, you're actually compounding the costs, because you're going to have to find bus drivers, you have to pay them, and you have to also pay for gas to get us to and fro, and also that disrupts our class and our learning, because we have to leave the buildings to get to those different JRTC units. So that's another thing I would like the board to think about as well. And also, all the JRTC instructors in the room, if you could stand please, these are all United States veterans. We already have enough veterans out of work right now. We have enough people coming from Afghanistan and Iraq right now. These people, every instructor in here has worked 20 or plus years defending this nation, and they just wanted to come back and serve our community. So do we want to buy the people that took their time, volunteered their time, countless hours outside of the school for CLP and these different events, and you want to take that away? I'm sorry, I disagree.
Good evening, everyone. I am Trent Morrison from Bladensburg High School. I am a fourth-year AFJ ROTC member and also the vice wing commander of our unit, in other words, second-in-command of our unit. I started off in the 9th grade, not wanting to take JRTC. I didn't think that I would be comfortable around that environment. But after my first week in JRTC, I went home and ran straight to my parents, and I told them that I loved JRTC with a smile on my face. Though there are times I fell down because of all of the yelling from the upper-level cadets, I still found JRTC to be worth it. After my 9th grade year was over, there are some developments with myself that took place. I stopped talking back to my authority. I worked harder in school and outside of school. My GPA at first was around a range of 2.3, 2.5, but now currently it is a 3.75. I also gained the interest of doing all of the good deeds it would take to be the man on top of our chain of command. At JRTC, us cadets go through all different kinds of obstacles. Some may be very difficult for us, but in the end, we come out of JRTC with strong character and wonderful life skills that could be cherished for the rest of our lives. These include integrity, selflessness, responsibility, self-motivation, speaking skills, writing skills, teamwork abilities, resume construction, and outstanding leadership skills. A parent's and teacher's dream is to develop their kids with the, with the traits that I just mentioned earlier. It should be everyone's dream to build a society with these people having these traits. AFJ ROTC is my life right now, and soon the Air Force will be when I enlist. There's nothing that I know more than AFJ ROTC. Our mission is to develop citizens of character dedicated to serving their nation and community. I am Trent Morrison, student and vice wing commander from Bladensburg High School, and I have successfully become that developed citizen to serve my nation through the hard work of AFJ ROTC. So I conclude with this question. Why take away something that makes students and parents' lives so much better and easier? Thank you.
My name is Richard McVay. I'm a junior from Wind Park High School, and I've been enrolled in JRTC for the last three years. I started out in Bellevue, Nebraska, and I have to say that this is one of the best corps I've ever seen. After hearing about this proposal, I found it hard not to address the board about the possible changes to JRTC units and programs in the PGCS school system. I want to state why this budget cut proposal is not in the best interest of the students, but would be more harm than good. The ROTC program is something my fellow cadets and I need for many reasons. JRTC provides a different kind of education that kids my age need to be successful in life. Leadership and teamwork is just two of the many qualities that the program provides. When JRTC teaches these essential qualities, it provides the high school cadets with self-confidence, self-esteem, initiative, and importantly, those in the program form a lasting bond with fellow cadets and instructors that surpass those from any other extracurricular activity, because kids that are enrolled in this program are treated equally. They go through experiences like Cadet Officer Leadership Program. This is a summer leadership program, which I have attended over this past summer. Other activities JRTC provides are drill team and color guard, which is the best way to learn teamwork and service before self. These qualities that are taught at each school provides each cadet with the tools to be successful in any future job. Through this program, cadets have the opportunities that they would not be offered in this program if it is centralized and downsized. The number of instructors per student would increase, not allowing a more personal interaction with the student. This interaction, for me, has been irreplaceable in learning many JRTC and life concepts. If the board cuts this program, then it is depriving students from the tools they need to be successful in school, college, and throughout their life. The instruction provided through this program is lifelong. If this proposal is allowed to continue, many students will not be able to attend a consolidated JRTC program. This will limit the opportunities for those students that cannot attend. Another huge asset to the cadets' education is the, in the JRTC, is that instructors are retired military members who hold college degrees. A person with this experience should be presented in high school environments to provide the knowledge for the cadets and other students to learn from. My JRTC instructors are Air Force, and I see and live by the Air Force code, integrity first, service before self, and excellence in all we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Demonte Blackwell.
Good afternoon. My name is Cadet Captain Demonte Blackwell of Wind Park High School's AFJ ROTC program. I'm here today to speak on the reduction of Prince George's County's unit, JRTC units. When I was a freshman in high school, I didn't know if I wanted to work or go to college, and the military wasn't an option for me. But I knew that I wouldn't like ROTC. I was undisciplined and unaware to the opportunities that ROTC had to offer. Several months into my freshman year, I knew that the military was something that I was going to do. The Marine Corps, the Marine Corps was my branch of choice at 13 years old. The values instilled, the values ROTC instilled in me led me to the realization there is something bigger than me in life, and that there is something more important than just getting what you want done. On December 23rd, 2010, I listened to the United States Marine Corps. I have the opportunity, I've had the opportunity to take in all lessons that ROTC has to teach. Unfortunately, others may not. One of those people bring my younger brother. He's nine years old, and every day, well, every Wednesday or Thursday, he gets to see me dressed up in my dress blues. Unfortunately, he may not have that opportunity. He always asks me questions about my uniform, but he may not get to wear it. Don't deny my brother these opportunities, and don't deny anybody these opportunities. Everybody should have the opportunity to lead, and if they want to, serve their country at some point in time. If ROTC takes it for them to find out that's what they want to do, then don't take that away from them. Keep ROTC in Prince George's County and don't take it away. That's all.
Elliot Cantor.
Good evening. I'm Cadet 2nd Lieutenant Elliot Cantor, the logistics officer from the Dr. Henry A. Wise High School's Air Force JRTC. Training received throughout JRTC benefits students not only in the classroom, but also in life outside of school. JRTC builds confidence, self-discipline, self-discipline, helps students, yeah, sorry about that, teaches self-discipline and helps students advance academically and opens doors towards their future. When it comes to college and scholarship opportunities, JRTC opens doors for the cadets. JRTC brings good experiences for the cadets that bring lessons that can be used in their everyday, everyday life, when it comes to working together with other people and to helping out the community. The goal of JRTC is to build better citizens for America. JRTC helps change lives for students that begin to fall down the wrong path. I myself was changed by this program. I didn't do too well during my freshman year of high school. My grades weren't pretty good, and my parents were really concerned about me, especially my mother. I opened up my eyes at the end of my 9th grade year and saw that JRTC was a real interesting thing. I'm now a senior and my third year in JRTC, and I'm proud to say that I have made, they has been one of my best choices I've made in my high school career and has helped me outside of school, outside of school. My grades have been better since I've entered. I've become a better person and have made my parents proud for what JRTC has helped me become. Also with these economic times, having JRTC on my resume and the uniform has helped me find a job and get hired on the spot. JRTC doesn't really receive many funds as one may think it does. Besides for, for funding half of the instructor's income and providing facilities for the units, everything else is pretty much funded by JRTC itself. Headquarters Air Force JRTC provides our units with the uniforms for our cadets. The JRTC units raise their own funds to help pay for camps, field trips, and purchase other uniform parts such as ribbons, medals, and cords. From time to time, the units are short on funds, and cadets, the cadets and instructors help out from their own pockets, as well as volunteer their time to chaperone some camps that last up to a week. I'm sure that, I'm sure there can be other options that help save money that won't cut out key programs like JRTC that help students in, in and outside of the school. It is important to keep JRTC for future generations that are to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I am Cadet 2nd Lieutenant Daniel Stevens, Special Projects Officer at Dr. Henry A. Wise High School. I would like to talk to you tonight about cutting, about not cutting junior ROTC out of the county budget and to keep funding it for future school years to come. I feel that Prince, I feel that our Prince George's County Board of Education should not cut the ROTC out of the budget. If the board does cut the junior ROTC out the budget, they will be putting it into a great program. In junior ROTC, you develop leadership skills and become a better person, not only in school, but outside of school as well. Through this program, you learn the true meaning of teamwork. In the two years I have been a part of the Wise High School Junior ROTC Unit, I have graduated three leadership camps, including First Year Orientation Camp, FYOC, Shenandoah Valley Cadet Officer Leadership School at Shepherd University in Shepherdstown, West Virginia, and Cadet Training Instructor Academy. When I attended these camps, I learned how to lead myself and groups of my peers. The Air Force Junior ROTC Unit at Wise High School has helped me especially become a better person, because before I joined the unit, I was heading down the wrong track. In my past, I have been suspended several, numerous times for fighting and skipping. Being, being part of the Wise Air Force JRTC Unit had helped, has helped me change, become a better person, but also the instructors have influenced me as well. If I had not joined the Wise High School Unit, when I did, I would, I am positive I would not be standing here right now speaking before you, or I would not be in school. So I ask the members of the board to keep, to please keep funding junior ROTC and other programs, so cadets can get help like me. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Cadet 2nd Lieutenant Tiffany Clark, and I am a junior at Dr. Henry A. Wise Junior High School. I am respectfully requesting that you do not downsize junior ROTC due to the fact it has helped me and thousands of other cadets build high self-esteem. And junior ROTC, if junior ROTC is taken away from our schools, most students in the future will not be able to experience the impact it has had on many lives. My experience in JRTC has been extraordinary. It has helped me, it has helped me a lot in the past with my confidence and my leadership abilities. I never had much confidence in myself until I knew what I could do and how quickly I could get things done. Many people that join JRTC come in immature, not serious, or need help with their lives. Junior ROTC helps mold students into setting higher standards and achieving their future goals. The junior ROTC program has changed me into a much better human being. Now I have integrity, I put my services before myself, and I have excellence in all I do. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time and good night.
Good evening, parents, teachers, and fellow peers. I am Cadet Colonel Delaney Miles, and I'm the wing commander of the AFJ ROTC Unit at Bladensburg High School. I'm here to speak on the topic of the possible changes to the AFJ ROTC units in Prince George's County. AFJ ROTC is not only a program, but it's a life-changing experience. I honestly can't think of where I would be if I never had AFJ ROTC. Tomorrow, I am due at the Military Entrance Processing Station to be processed into the United States Air Force. AFJ ROTC set me on a path that I wouldn't found otherwise. AFJ ROTC gives me something to work for and makes me want to excel in everything I do. AFJ ROTC is a passion, and I love it with all my heart. It's the kind of experience and program that just makes you want to do better for yourself. As a freshman in high school, I felt like I was standing at a fork in the road. You could choose left or right. Left is wrong, and right is right. When I was in the 9th grade, I chose the wrong path, and thankfully, my mother took me out of Fairmont Heights High School. I transferred to Bladensburg High School, where Major Davis, Master Sergeant Eisen, and Master Sergeant Williams helped me make a U-turn and go down the right path. I turned around and had a successful remaining three years in high school because of AFJ ROTC. I love AFJ ROTC, and I will always support what it stands for. Thank you.
Tiara Jones. Trey Lassane.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the, of the board. My name is Cadet Staff Sergeant Colton Correll from Dr. Henry A. Wise Junior High School. I'm here this evening to persuade you to keep JRTC in Prince George's County Public Schools funded for years to come. I've been a part of AFJ ROTC now for one and a half years. I am a, I've been to one junior leadership camp and I plan to go to another one this spring and another one this summer if we are still funded. JRTC is a vital program that helps high school kids prepare, prepare for life. It teaches kids valued virtues such as honor, integrity, leadership, and much more. Even though I've only been in for a year and a half, I feel, and I am told, that I'm, I am an important asset to the structure of my unit. Two years ago, I was in a very bad situation. J-R, J-ROTC helped bring structure to my life. My GPA was a one-point-three-two-five in the beginning of my tenth grade year. ROTC helped bring up my standards and pushed me to limits I never, I had never reached before. My GPA now is a three-point-one-two-five and still steadily rising. Though sometimes I waver in my life, my J-ROTC family picked me back up on my feet and helped me keep going. I ask myself why anyone would want to close down a program that has helped over thousands of people nationwide? It is just not sensible. It is my highest wishes that you make the right decision and keep JRTC open for as long as possible. If you choose to defund JRTC, you could possibly end hundreds, if not thousands, of future leaders of America. Thank you for listening to my opinion. I hope you have changed your mind in cutting the budget in ROTC.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Dr. Height, board members, and audience. Me and my classmate, Representative of Northwestern Evening High School. I am here to speak on the topic of Northwestern, Northwestern Evening High School funding. It would be a devastating blow to many students if they found out that the night school programs were not to take place anymore. A lot of them, including myself, would end up having a feeling of distrust towards the school system and the local and state government. The impact on these students would be tremendous. Without Evening High School as an option, we would have, we would have a future, we would not have a future or even a dream of an adulthood life. In regards to that being said, I feel as though you, the school board, the superintendent, and the state government are making decisions without considering our grave situation that many students in our county are facing. Respected board members and Dr. Height, our superintendent, you publicly speak of the pride of Maryland being ranked as the best school system in the nation. Data, as you are aware, has indicated that Prince George's County Public Schools has made some great strides regarding academic improvement. The Evening High School has a positive impact in, in reaching that goal. Our school leaders and community, our school leaders and community leaders speak about the, the high school dropout rates and how to improve this negative mark. Data has shown that the Evening High School helps prevent the dropout rate. Respectfully, Francisco Celestino.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Denise and I'm here to represent, to support Evening High School. I believe it has a lot of benefits to a lot of students who want to take education very seriously. They want to receive that high school diploma, they want to watch their family and friends on that very special day when they walk down that aisle, everything they've worked so hard for, a second opportunity, in other words. Those who were unable to attend day school such, for reasons like work schedules, childcare, age exclusion, and other similar reasons, Evening High School opens another world of opportunities, careers, finding a better job. And I believe really strongly that this is something that you shouldn't cut a budget on. I want to point something out to you really quick. That sign in there, over there, "Children Come First." Just take a quick look at it. I believe an online program is not beneficial. You need that interaction with the teacher, to speak with the teacher, ask questions, that one-on-one. And that high school experience, that, um, let me see. Although this is a technology age, not everyone is fortunately to have, fortunately, fortunate to have access to a computer. Yes, there are public libraries, but there always, that seat is not always going to be available to you. There's always a time limit. And this means that some people will not complete high school and this will widen the learning gap between the affluent and economically disadvantaged. I had Ms. Rosaline Johnson come to Northwestern yesterday and she asked each and every one of us, "Have you thought about your future?" The room was silent and I said, "Yes." With Evening High School, they've given us a lot of opportunities. They've given us a lot of information on how to pursue our dreams. And I am very grateful to have that opportunity. I look forward to walking down that aisle, to being a wildcat, in other words. And I also want to thank you for having me here. And in conclusion, I want to say, please, I stand here. It will cause an immediate devastating effect and conclude with a lot of non-graduates because of their dynamic lives. And we have the right to learn and we want that interaction with our teachers. It's a very powerful tool. And I, I stand here because I believe that I should, I have, I should speak because someone is making a decision on my life. Thank you.
We all certainly want to hear every comment that we possibly can, but we really ask that you comply with the rules, which are, if you signed up to speak, please respect those who did call to sign up. We have, as I said earlier, sixty-one registered speakers. So you are not allowed to relinquish any of your time to another registered speaker. There are additional times to come for public hearing. We certainly appreciate every comment, however.
Good evening. I'm Fode Canoe from Bladensburg High School. I'm a cadet at the unit at Bladensburg High School and I'm currently the Inspector General of that unit. Today in high school, today in school, I read a letter that says, "The Board of Education is, is proposing measures that will result in the elimination of some JRTC units, including the one at my school, Bladensburg." As I can remember, the first words that proceeded from my mouth were, "Can someone give me a pen so I can write something to the Board of Education?" Reducing funds for JRTC will discourage certain group of students who depend on instructors to excel. My instructor, Major Davis, is doing everything possible right now to make sure that I get into college in order for me to pursue a career in medical, in the medical field. If you eliminate JRTC, you're also eliminating this instructor called Major Davis and other instructors that are trying to make sure that students get ahead in life. Canceling JRTC in Bladensburg will mean canceling certain things that will help students to grow and become better people in the society, not only in the society, but in the world. Say for example, commitment in doing things. Right now, I'm the only male student in my nursing class and that, that is based on the fact that I learned to be confident in myself and in everything that I do in JRTC. If it wasn't JRTC, I wouldn't be confident enough in order for me to even sign up for the class, based on what other people are saying. So if you take away this program, then you're also depriving a middle school student that is about to enter high school from having the confidence to sign up for such classes. Please, I indulge you in order for you to reconsider the proposal that you're trying to make in eliminating certain JRTC units here in Prince George's County. Thank you.
Thank you. Odessa Lucas.
Ladies and gentlemen, lend me your ears. I am Odessa Lucas, a senior at Sutland High School. It has, ROTC has always been a part of my high school career. I'm very upset that it's being cut from PG County. I love the solid bonds I've formed with other cadets, the opportunities I've had meeting some of the most important people in the US military, including General Colin Powell, riding a multimillion-dollar ship, and most importantly, the competition, not against others, but myself, to see if I could overcome my physical, mental, and emotional weaknesses to see if I could accomplish my goals. ROTC builds better citizens, ones that are strong, honest, confident, patriotic, and leaders, citizens more than likely that will run this county in the future. If ROTC is reduced, I honestly believe PG County will regret it. I know if ROTC wasn't in my life, I'd be lazy, have low self-esteem, be unconfident and weak-minded, and I especially wouldn't be considered for an Army ROTC scholarship right now. Please don't reduce or cut ROTC. Our kids need it. They need it more than you know. ROTC gives kids somewhere to belong and believe in their goals one hundred percent. At the end of the day, don't we as humans want to do what we dream of and belong to something bigger than us? Clearly, you guys do.
Sarah Gabriel.
Good evening. My name is Alexis Saunders and I serve as the Vice President for the Student Government Association at High Point High School. Although I will be graduating this school year, it devastates me to hear of the proposed budget cuts for two thousand and twelve. The changes that have taken place this year have affected me personally in many ways. First and foremost, I must say that the class sizes are becoming unbearable. It has become nearly impossible to get the instruction needed in classes when there are thirty-five-plus students in rigorous courses. From personal experience, I know that teachers have been unable to help the students, not because of lack of knowledge, not because they did not want to, but simply because there was not enough time in class to tend to every student's needs and still have instruction time. To add on to this, the activity buses that were once provided to the students are no longer available. This means that students are unable to stay after school to get help that they need to achieve academically. This will become a hindrance to all of our students in the future and make it hard for Prince George's County students to compete with other students across the country in the future as well. In addition, it is evident that almost every elected official during their campaign speaks on the importance of education, including county council members, school board members, county executives, and our very own President of the United States. However, in this instance, education is being pushed aside and the students who are the future of this country are being affected. As students, we feel that the statements given by our politicians have become nothing more than empty promises. Finally, I must say that the thought of cutting other programs in the school would do a great injustice to our students. It is programs such as student government and ROTC that teach students leadership, discipline, and how to work well with others. Today, I'm not speaking to you as a politician, a teacher, a principal, nor a Prince George's County School employee. I come to you as a student, asking that you would consider everything that myself and my peers here have to say today. I hope that you would remember that every decision that you make will affect the children. All in all, I asked you, is it okay to punish our children for the mistakes made by those of higher power? Are the children really being considered in the decision-making? And most importantly, if our students are struggling to compete with students locally, how will we be able to compete nationally in college as well as in the future?
Good evening. First, let me thank the Board of Education and Superintendent Dr. Height for this opportunity. My name is Sheena Patel and it is not to my attention to stand here and place blame on anybody for the budget crisis we are in. However, as SCA President of High Point High School, when I saw the proposed budget for two thousand and twelve, I could not remain silent. As a senior with an accumulative grade point average of three-point-eighty-eight, being National Honor Society Secretary, being on the tennis team, swim team, Envirothon team, Asian Club, Foreign Language National Honor Society, and having taken numerous AP and honors courses, it seems as if education in the county is no longer a priority. My hard work and dedication to my education has earned me scholarships as well as my acceptance into the University of Maryland. So I stand here and ask, if funding in the county is failing, why is it that the students shall suffer? Classroom sizes have become so large. For example, sitting in an AP Calculus class with too many students for the teacher to proficiently teach is not only hurting my education, but the students who will take the class after me. This year, my peers already struggle to earn the grades they want because they do not get the one-on-one attention they deserve. Because these large class sizes, I stand here and ask, why is it that my teachers are stressed, stressed out about teaching? So I stand here and ask, why are they saying they wish they never worked for Prince George's County Schools? And why have they begun seeking jobs elsewhere? If we as students have the right to a free public education, why is it proposed that starting next school year, students will have to pay a fifty-dollar fee to pay, to play any sport? I spent time talking to coaches and sponsors of different activities who blatantly said if they're, that if they, if they are not paid, they will not coach. So I stand here and ask, how can students be expected to be accepted into colleges or prestigious universities around the nation if we're clearly being limited here at home? In such a competitive workforce, how will we succeed if we do not get the proper education to achieve our ambitions? If funding is cut in the wrong areas, the budget is hindering our, our education. And if our education is held back, our community is held back, and ultimately, society is held back. And we are society, we are the future, so is this our only option? So I stand here and ask, how in any possible way with these budget cuts will you meet your objective of preparing every student for college? Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Cadet Major Amber McGill and I am Wise High School's JRTC Vice Group Commander. I am here this evening to ask that our Board of Education does not cut JRTC from the budget. During my three years in this unit, I have attended nine leadership camps. Of these nine camps, I have graduated from five and trained younger cadets at the other four. Majority of my JRTC, majority of JRTC is paid for by Headquarters JRTC. However, the small percentage of the budget that the boards fund, that the board funds to JRTC has many benefits. JRTC creates motivated, dedicated, responsible, responsible students that tend to be leaders in our schools throughout Prince George's County. Our cadets are student government officers, sports captains, band leaders, and managers on their jobs. The benefits that JRTC brings to Prince George's County are much greater than its cost. For this reason, JRTC is a necessity in our school system. While I have been in JRTC, I have seen it change lives. It provides an alternative. In a USA Today News article titled, "Junior ROTC: More Than Just a Class to Teens," a student, William Michaels, from Asheville, North Carolina, stated that he doesn't get in trouble anymore thanks to leadership skills shaped by JRTC. And in education... And an education researcher, Jean Bottoms, stated that participants seem to become more disciplined in their studies and focused on goals. They walk with a certain confidence. The things that these individuals said about JRTC in their respective areas are also true about Prince George's County. To students like me, JRTC is more than just a class. It's a family of people that support each other. In the last few years, students outside of JRTC have seen the positive impact that JRTC has and have wanted to get involved. From 2005 to 2009, the percentage of students in JRTC has increased by 5% across the nation. In our unit at Wise, we have jumped from 206 cadets to 253 cadets in one year. That is 253 lives affected by a program that works. JRTC is clearly a program that our students want to keep in our schools. For this reason, we ask that our Board of Education does not cut JRTC from the budget. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Ebony Carter. I'm 15 years old, and I play the flute in the Gwin Park High School Marching Band. Music to me is my life. My life, I mean that it's everything to me. Music brings people happiness, and it makes them feel good. Now, I don't know how it is at other schools, but at Gwin Park High School, music is very important to us. In the marching band, you can't perform unless our GPA is at least a 2.5 or higher. That makes a lot of us either step our game up academically or put more focus into making sure that they both line up. We love music. I honestly believe that if you take music away from us, then it's going to take a lot of the motivation out that we have for school and grades, and a lot of us will not be able to go to school either because we dropped out or we can't afford it. In the mid-1960s, there was a musical group of young men that changed how the music business was ran and how it would improve. That musical group was called the Jackson Five. Jermaine, Tito, Marlon, Jackie, Randy, and Michael blessed the world, both white and black, with their talent and their message. On 1971, Michael Jackson went to become the biggest sensation and role model in history with songs like "Thriller," "We Are the World," and "Billie Jean." Do you think that any of this could have happened without music being their motivation? I don't think so. This is how we are. Music is a huge motivation to help us become anything and anybody we want to. Where do you think the world would be without people like Michael Jackson, Elton John, Ella Fitzgerald, Duke Ellington, Diana Ross, Billie Holiday, and even the Beatles? All these people have inspired us to want to do our best in everything that we decide to succeed in. I really hope you take this into consideration before you decide to take away the best thing that ever happened to us.
Hello, my name is Cassandra Harriet, and I'm from Frederick Douglass High School. I'm here to represent the students in and out of NJROTC that have developed a well-rounded student. ROTC has helped improve my life in many ways words cannot express. It has given me the confidence I need to be bolder and not afraid to stand up for myself. It has given me the ability to speak up for myself, and I wear the uniform with pride and honor. ROTC has benefited my friends also. One of my friends has told me that if it wasn't for ROTC, she does not know where she would be. She has told me that if it wasn't for ROTC, she would have seen herself in jail somewhere. Now, I ask you, do you want to take a program that saves lives away? Why, of all programs, ROTC? A program that develops leaders? ROTC is unlike any other class. It is not simply an after-school club. It is an organization of students who form a bond and are challenged to be better than the average student in the classroom. We wear a uniform up and down the hallways with pride. If you take away ROTC, you're taking away a program that pushes students beyond their expectations into new heights. Please do not take ROTC out of public schools. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Amani Jamal. I'm in the 10th grade, and I am representing the music program of Gwin Park High School. The profile that you state of a graduate in Prince George's County is the same profile of a music student at Gwin Park High School. A batting average for a baseball player is 300, and music does 30%, which is unacceptable. Music students have some of the highest GPAs in the whole school. For example, our drum major, William Miller Jr., has a GPA of 4.25. Music and athletics play a huge part in both building and enhancing character. Music and athletics opens new doors to students everywhere. We have played internationally and all around the US and have won many competitions and are still winning competitions to this day. Academics. Music uses both sides of the brain. Using math all the time, music demands perfection. Our band motto is "Superiors by Any Means Necessary." The students of Gwin Park have transcended that to their daily lives, allowing us to strive for excellence musically and academically. If I had to choose between administrators and music directors, I would choose my music director. Our music director, Mr. William Lake Jr., provides leadership, enthusiasm for education as a whole, and discipline, and striving for superiors, not to mention scholarship opportunities in both music and athletics, and everyone knows just how limited those are for everyone. So think about cutting music not just affects us right now, but affects kids of the future.
Dr. Height.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to all of the students who spoke in support of the music program. But I just want to provide a point of clarification. There are no proposed cuts to the music program. So I wanted to just make sure that the individuals who are here with respect to music have that understanding.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Height, for that clarification.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Rhonda Slade, and I am here in a dual capacity, one as the President and Chief Executive Officer of the Prince George's Chamber of Commerce, and the other as the proud parent of a student at Air Force JRTC, Cadet Major Amber P. McGill at Henry Wise High School. First, speaking as the Chief Executive Officer of the largest chamber of commerce in the state of Maryland, representing close to 1,000 businesses, owners and executives are in dire need of quality workforce. The primary purpose of JRTC instruction is to instill the values of citizenship, service to the United States, personal responsibility, and a sense of accomplishment. Studies have shown that schools with JRTC programs report lower dropout rates, better grade point averages, and higher SAT scores, benefits that support students as they graduate and enter college. These benefits are also seen by the business community as enhancement to public safety. A report by the Center for Strategic and International Studies reports, quote, "JRTC builds self-discipline, teamwork, motivation, and confidence in young people," unquote. Students who participate in JRTC have the opportunity to develop leadership and communication skills that will prepare them to enter the workforce and become quality employees. Secondly, speaking as a proud JRTC parent, I know firsthand that the students learn more than simply military science. The curriculum covers a broad range of subjects, including communication skills, leadership, physical fitness, United States and world history, citizenship, and technology. These students are provided with leadership training and opportunities that are priceless as they learn financial literacy, problem-solving, goal-setting, and key skills that can translate into any career path. I have seen my daughter, Cadet Major Amber McGill, build self-confidence by overcoming fears during obstacle training courses, develop leadership skills by leading other student activities, and enhance her physical fitness by participating in drill and physical activities related to ROTC. She has also positioned herself to be eligible for full scholarships to attend colleges throughout the nation. The JRTC programs in the Prince George's County Public Schools are a crucial component of the curriculum and provide opportunities to produce well-rounded, competent leaders in our community. The Prince George's Chamber of Commerce understands the need for budget reductions and implications involved in this process. We stand ready as an organization to assist the Prince George's County Public School System in advocating to county and state government for restoration of the budget. However, we strongly believe that rather than reducing the programs that directly impact students, such as reducing the JRTC program, layoffs of teachers resulting in increased class sizes, and elimination of programs that provide hands-on workforce development training for students, the school system and Board of Education should consider reorganization of the administrative functions to reduce the number of high-level, high-salary positions that do not have a direct impact on the classroom and the students. We know that there are real challenges to balancing this year's budget and are committed to work together with you to find solutions that benefit all Prince Georgians. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board, Dr. Height, students, and parents. I am Jimmy L. Slade, Colonel, US Army Retired, and Executive Director of the Community Ministry of Prince George's County. I present this statement to express my support for the continued funding of comprehensive ROTC programs in the Prince George's County high schools. My support for ROTC is based on the positive benefit my participation in the program has had on my life and the lives of other students in the program that I observed. ROTC was not offered in the high school I attended in a rural southern state. However, able-bodied male students were required to participate in ROTC in the land-grant college I attended. During my first two years of college, I studied aerospace science, leadership studies, and drill as an Air Force ROTC student. After testing and qualifying for advanced ROTC, during my last two years of college, I studied military history, advanced leadership skills, drill, survival training, and basic military training during summer camp as an Army ROTC student. Upon graduation, I was commissioned a gentleman and officer in the United States Army. From my studies and experiences in ROTC, I learned and developed character which I would describe as integrity, selflessness, and the desire and will to do the right thing whether observed or not observed by others. I also learned and developed valuable leadership skills, including analytical thinking, problem-solving, and decision-making skills, teamwork, and responsibility. As school board members, parents, and citizens, I believe you would agree that these are qualities that we need to cultivate in students in high school and at every level of training and education. Tonight, we ask you as school board members to do the right thing and decide to continue the funding of ROTC in our county schools. My experiences in training I acquired in ROTC helped me interview and qualify to become an executive trainee for Sears in a southern city in 1969 before I reported to active duty. As an Army officer, it provided the opportunity and foundation for my career and culminated in my retirement as a full Colonel. I also learned qualities of selflessness that still motivates me to serve as a community leader and for the betterment of our nation. As the author of a leadership manual for use by students and adults in a program similar to ROTC, namely Civil Air Patrol, and observing my granddaughter Amber developed through the ROTC program at Wise High School, I observed that these qualities are qualities that students are learning and gaining, the same leadership, character development skills, and qualities in high school that I experienced and benefited from in college. Overall, ROTC offers a vehicle to instill discipline and self-confidence, and I urge you to continue this program with full funding. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Jamal. I'm a proud band parent at Gwin Park High School under the direction of Mr. William Lake Jr. I'm on the Gwin Park PTSO. I'm here on behalf that documents are circulating that there are proposed cuts in the music department under performing arts, and we are outraged. We are outraged that there is any consideration to affect the music department, especially under the direction of Mr. William Lake Jr. Our students are doing excellent. Our drum major, our senior Jennifer Presley, 4.25, our drum major, 4.25. These students are music leaders. They're leading by example. Excellence, superior education. We need them as leaders because we feel that you, as the Board, have forgotten that it is about the students. Athletics are a huge part. You're talking about cutting athletic directors. My daughter, 10th grader, the only African-American female on the Gwin Park High School golf team, shot a 68 and a 70. That's good all day long, all day long, and that is how she will pay for college. So if you cut athletic directors, how will she get the information she needs? Coach Henson Hubb, Gwin Park's athletic director, said to her, hey, you know, golf scholarships go most unclaimed. Why don't you try it? My daughter had never played before and shot a 68 and a 70. That is tigerish if you don't know. We need you all to recognize what our students are doing here in this county. It's getting to the point that parents are embarrassed to say, I live in Prince George's County, and my daughter or my child goes to a Prince George's County school. You all are taking our education and putting it almost in your back pocket because it's not the forefront. These are our future. These kids are our future, and we cannot cut education. We cannot cut athletics. We cannot cut performing arts if we want them to be well-rounded, internationally trained, ready for college. Now, if we want them to just work at McDonald's, cut it all. Cut it all. But if you want them to be our future, to be the next President Barack Obama, to be the next Thurgood Marshall, to be the next Colin Powell, because this is, what, Black History Month, and we're sitting up here fighting for our students' education? When are we going to put children first? No Child Left Behind? Hello? Hello? We're leaving our children behind. Every day I'm at the school, we're fighting. Our teachers are discouraged and disheartened. They need a pay raise. They need encouragement. They need tools. HSAs, get them out of there. Thank you.
Robin Loeb. Reminder, as you come forward, we ask that you use titles and not names, particularly if they are children's names that we have not gotten permission to use. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Robin Loeb. I'm an ESOL and reading recovery teacher at Ridgecrest Elementary School in Hyattsville. I'm here to support the children that we work to save and help in reading recovery, and I'd like to ask the people who are here to support reading recovery to stand, please. I'm thinking of a little boy, I'm going to call him Carlos. As you may be aware, in the fall, reading recovery teachers ask the classroom, first-grade teachers, to give us a list of the children they believe are the most struggling and falling behind their peers and can't learn to read and write in the classroom. So this little boy, I tested him in August. He was a cheerful, lively little guy when I tested him. He was almost taken into one of the limited number of reading recovery slots we have at our school, but he was barely edged out by a little girl whose needs seemed to be slightly greater, so he did not receive reading recovery in the fall. This month, we have completed our work with the first round of children that we taught, and we've asked the teachers to give us a list now at this time of year of the children who are the most struggling and not getting anywhere in the classroom. Again, he was listed, and again, I tested him. He has not progressed at all in classroom instruction. He still reads at text level zero. In addition, there has been a disturbing change in his demeanor. He is morose, and he seems depressed. I'm talking about a six-year-old child. In an effort to cheer him up a little bit when I tested him this month, I said, Carlos, you are really getting bigger. You used to be up to here, and now you're up to here. He said, I can't grow up. I was confused. What do you mean you can't grow up? I asked him. He said- He said, I don't learn. I don't know stuff. I paused, and I asked, are you worried about that? And he said, yes. The good news is Carlos will be taken into reading recovery now. The question, of course, is where would Carlos turn if you eliminate reading recovery? It reminds me of a fortune. I opened in a fortune cookie last week. It said, "The cost of education never outstrips the cost of ignorance." As a postscript, I would like to bring you up to date on the little girl whose slow scores edged Carlos out of reading recovery help last fall. She now reads solidly at and somewhat above grade level. "I'm not afraid of hard books," she says proudly. That's what I want to say.
Thank you. Sherri Gross.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Height, students, parents, and everyone here. My name is Sherri Gross, and I am a grandparent, and I am helping my daughter raise her son. My grandson, and I want to talk to you all briefly about the reading recovery program. My grandson, last year, 2009, 2010, was rezoned from Clinton Grove Elementary School to Fort Washington Forest, and I had heard great things about the school. It really wasn't great when I first got him in there. I wasn't really happy initially because he really was reading below grade level, and we were trying everything we knew to help him at home. There just didn't seem to be enough time. So after having the conference with the teacher and discussing some of the issues, I was really positive at that time that he was going to be left behind, and I was afraid because I didn't know what to do. So without getting to a lot of the details, I happened to take a look at the teacher's grade book, and I noticed that there was a high percentage of students who were reading below level, and there were a lot of students in this class, no aide. So at that point, I had done some research, and I realized that there was a reading recovery program. I asked about it. It was full. I continued to ask and ask until he got in it, into this program. I'm going to tell you all, that was the best program, I can personally tell you this, that has ever come through the schools. My son and my daughter have been in Prince George's County. My grandson, who is now in second grade, is reading at and above grade level, and we've helped him at home. Matter of fact, I was really surprised at some of the things that they've learned. You know, an octopus is a chameleon, and I didn't realize that he did these things, but he tells me this now because he's excited about reading, and he has to have, especially our young men, our women too, but our young men need this. Within a matter of months, he, you know, was comprehending. His whole attitude did a total change. He believed that he could do it. He had confidence that he could do it, and I was elated. I attribute that to, yes, we helped him at home, but the reading recovery program, that foundation that was laid in that program was, I can't even speak enough about it. That's why I'm here tonight. I really want you all to, you know, understand, I understand that our county is currently going through, you know, we have limited resources, and that many of our programs are going to be cut. However, I can guarantee you this, if you cut that program, our kids are going to get left behind. Thank you.
Nancy Watson.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Watson, and I have been teaching in Prince George's County for 20 years. Most recently, I've been a reading recovery teacher, serving our most at-risk first graders. I'm here tonight to ask that you reconsider the pending recommendation cutting reading recovery. In these grave financial times, it is important to consider our program in terms of its cost-effectiveness and proven results. In 2007, the U.S. Department of Education and the Institute of Education Sciences released an independent review of research findings on reading recovery. This national review confirmed the scientific basis of reading recovery. Out of all beginning reading interventions, quote, "Reading recovery achieved the highest rating possible for alphabetic skills and general reading achievement," end quote. Reading recovery narrows or closes the achievement gap for children who are most at risk. Reading recovery works, and the data proves it. Reading recovery is also cost-effective. Long-term illiteracy poses grave risks. Each child who does not receive reading recovery as an intervention in first grade and subsequently has to be retained costs our county approximately $9,000 per child per year. In addition, many children who receive help from reading recovery avoid the costly process of referral, screening, and special education services. Across the nation in 2007, 2008, less than 1% of successful reading recovery students were subsequently placed in special education for literacy-related reasons at the end of first grade. This is a significant cost-benefit to our county. But for me, the most compelling argument is our precious children. How does someone put a price tag on the gift of reading? When I try to answer that question, I think of faces and stories. I picture Hakim, who learned to read while battling sickle cell anemia and undergoing a bone marrow transplant. I picture Matt, a homeless student living in a campground. I could tell he had read each night by the campfire, evidenced by the smoky smell of his little books every day when he pulled them out of his bag. I picture David, who was falling behind because he couldn't pay attention in the general classroom. Once he learned to read in our one-on-one setting, he spontaneously hugged me and said, "Thank you so much, Mrs. Watson, for teaching me to read." These true stories represent only a small sampling of the hundreds of children I've grown to love and serve. This is a time of severe challenge for the county. However, I believe personally in the NOAA principle, which says, "There are no prizes for predicting rain. Prizes go to those people who choose to build arcs." A lot of time, energy, and funds can be used to predict the upcoming rainstorm of illiteracy, early failure, and low test scores in our county. Rather than predicting rain, let us commit ourselves to building arcs. Reading recovery is just such an arc.
Jason Tidwell.
All right. Good evening. I'd just like to thank the board to give me an opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jason Tidwell, and I'm a 2007 graduate of Bowie High School. Attended Prince George's County Public Schools my whole life. Speaking tonight on behalf of the reading recovery program, I was informed that the reading recovery program may possibly be eliminated. I find this very detrimental to the students of Prince George's County Public Schools. Myself, I was a reading recovery student in first grade at Rockledge Elementary School in Bowie. And I had a little, you know, growing up, I had trouble reading, and reading recovery really just got me through school and throughout, when I attended school at Benjamin Tasker and Bowie High School, was on honor roll every quarter, and was able to test into the TAG program when I was in elementary school. And currently, I'm a county employee. I'm in the Prince George's County Police Academy and anticipating graduation in May. And if anybody's related to a police officer, a large part of their job is reading and writing, as I've discovered in the academy. So I just can't imagine where I'd be today without this program. So I hope that you reconsider, and hopefully are able to keep the program. Thank you.
Annette Jones.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm a fifth-grade teacher here to speak on behalf of reading recovery. Reading recovery has been at my school since 1998. Eight of those 12 years, our reading recovery teacher was only part-time. This means that many students who needed the service were not able to receive it as they should. However, during those years, 131 students were serviced, and 94 students were on grade level at the end of the school year. Isn't that remarkable? And another 15 would have been on grade level if they were able to complete the program. Superb. Okay? Reading recovery was greatly benefited by our students. Many of those students who were on grade level by the end of the year would have been retained if it were not for reading recovery. The reading recovery teacher also works with the classroom teacher, total package, helping with strategies and suggesting modified work for the students. Isn't that what you ask for? That's what we are giving. However, you plan to cut the program. Now, please think, if you had a student, or your child, your grandchild, a next-of-kin who were on the reading recovery program and doing extremely well, reading, making the sounds, doing everything, being successful, and a note comes home and says, "The program will be terminated," how would you feel? Think on these things. There have been many students that I have had in fourth and fifth grades that were former reading recovery students who were performing on or above grade level. I didn't have any idea that some of those students were struggling readers in the first grade. Parents have gone back to the reading recovery teacher to inform her that their child is now on honor roll. It will be a great loss if the reading recovery program was removed from the county or from our school system. Every child deserves, and you know it, a chance to get to their full potential. Some children just need just a little extra boost in the beginning and become successful students for the rest of their school career. Another area that the parents are always commenting on is that the reading recovery program completely changes their child's view of school, learning, and reading. Classroom teachers cannot believe that the change in the students' confidence and self-esteem after just a few short weeks. These students would never speak up in class. I rest my case.
Patricia Fletcher. Patricia Fletcher. Former board member. Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Pat Fletcher. I come to you today as a citizen, a proud citizen of Prince George's County. And you know, I get real wordy, so I had to go back there and cut some of this stuff, but let me do this real quick. We all must ensure that our children receive a 21st century education in order to compete for the 21st century, for 21st century employment. Career Tech, STEM, IB, and Advanced Placement courses are all great, and we need to continue with those programs. But if our children are not prepared at an early age to begin to read and comprehend what they read, all of these course offerings are a mute point. To this, to do this, it comes with a price tag. And I heard, all of us are saying the same thing, we just need a finger to point to. The Board of Education can only work with what they are given. We are not a revenue-generating Board of Education. So as parents and citizens, we must hold our elected officials accountable. Every last one of them has stated at one time or another that education is their number one priority. This does not mean that they contact individual board members or staff and direct them to have this program or that in their district, to hire or not to hire a particular person or contractor, moving up a school on the list to be built in their district as opposed to another district, and yes, even directing the school system not to furlough certain staff to ensure reelection. Do not allow politics to be played on the backs of our children. Hold them accountable in ensuring that adequate funding is made available. You have heard and will continue to hear individuals and organizations speak on specific programs and departments and why they should not be cut. All of the proposals and cuts in these departments have a direct, not an indirect, but a direct impact on student achievement. Having said that, as someone says all the time, you can't do that without money. This board has been given specific dollar amounts to work with, and they have to do the best they can. As citizens, I have sat at many a board meetings, and every board meeting, when it comes to budget, it is standing room only. I'm asking all of these citizens to go with me to Annapolis and give your story of the achievement of our kids, and make sure that our legislators put children's firsts and not their selfish needs.
Amy Young Buckler.
Fletcher turned it off. Good evening. My name is Amy Young Buckler. I'm the library media specialist at Green Belt Middle School. I also serve as chair of the school planning and management team and as the leader of the school improvement plan writing team. I am a national board-certified teacher, and this is my 13th year working for PG CPS. On February 1st, the superintendent presented information to the Board of Education outlining additional cuts to the fiscal year budget. These recommendations included the elimination of 90 library media specialist positions. The elimination of these positions will have a great impact on planned school reform at all levels. In his presentation, the superintendent also provided information about the profile of a graduate. Almost every 21st century skill listed in that profile is directly taught in the Maryland State Curriculum for Library Media, pre-K to 12. Not certain grade levels, all grade levels. Attached to my remarks is a copy of the analysis I completed comparing the profile of a graduate with the school library media state curriculum. Any skills listed in the brochure that are not directly taught could be taught through collaboration with the appropriate content areas. The school library media state curriculum addresses the age-appropriate applications of identical content for all grade levels pre-K to 12. The process of interacting with information, locating, collecting, organizing, interpreting, and sharing, remains constant whether students are in primary grades or high school. What does change is the level of expectation and the sophistication of resources used to produce final products. In the Common Core Standards for English Language Arts and Literacy, in history, social studies, science, and technical subjects, school library media is expressly targeted as something that needs to be integrated into all areas. To be ready for college, workforce training, and life in a technological society, students need the ability to gather, comprehend, evaluate, synthesize, and report on information and ideas to conduct original research in order to answer questions or solve problems, and to analyze and create a high-volume and extensive range of print and non-print texts in media forms old and new. Part of signing on to the Common Core movement involved agreeing to the standards as a whole, not implementing them piecemeal. Since Maryland has adopted the standards, how can the Prince George's County Public Schools gut a program which is expressly singled out as fundamental? The elimination of library media specialist positions will mean that our students will not be taught the skills they need by the people certified to teach them. There is overwhelming and consistent evidence showing that school library quality, the presence of a certified librarian, and adequate financial support for the purchase of new materials directly relate to reading achievement as well as to other measures of school success. This has been demonstrated at the state, national, and international levels. If we are trying to improve literacy and test scores in this county, library media specialists are essential educators in achieving this goal. Thank you.
Lori Morrow. Or is it Morel? Morrow.
Good evening, Mr. Superintendent, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Lori Morrow, and I'm the PTA president at My name is Lori Morrow, and I'm the PTA President at Tulip Grove Elementary School in Bowie. I am here tonight because we are concerned about staff reductions at our school. We understand budget cuts. As a PTA, we work hard to supplement the schools as much as we can, both by supporting school fundraisers and through our own PTA spending. Beyond social functions, our PTA budget includes money for assemblies, field trips, science fair, art supplies, recess equipment, as well as small grants to our teachers because we all know they spend some of their own money to outfit classrooms every year. We pay for these things because we understand there are bigger priorities for the school to pay for. We understand budget cuts because we lost our Assistant Principal a couple years ago. As much as we miss his presence, our staff has worked together to fill his void. This year, we lost lunch and recess monitors. And in, as inconvenient as it may be at times, our teachers and staff accepted it and have adjusted their schedules accordingly. We've tolerated these losses because we knew we could get by. What we cannot tolerate are more reductions in the area of our media specialists, our reading recovery, our guidance counselors, or the increase in class sizes for our children. The job of our school is to educate children. How well can this county do that if we make cuts in our most vital services? With continual staff reductions year after year, you are cutting into the very foundation that makes our children's education possible. As parents and volunteers, we do our best to supplement where our school needs us, but that only takes us so far. We cannot replicate the training and skills of our reading recovery team. We are not qualified to teach the research and computer skills that our media specialist excels at. We do not want our children to learn how to be half of an upstanding citizen because our guidance counselors are expected to do just as much work in half of the time. And above all, we cannot tolerate cramming more children into classrooms and expecting our children to learn well in an environment when classroom teachers are trying to make up for all of these other shortfalls as well. If our motto is children come first, we need to make sure that is true when you are deciding where to cut spending. At Tulip Grove, our parents know how to write letters. We've done it a lot lately. And I can guarantee we will continue to do so at both the county and state level until we are satisfied with the education our children are receiving. Thank you for your consideration.
Jennifer Harris. Jennifer Harris.
We're at a Board of Education meeting, and yes, there are children. So, good evening. My name is Jennifer Harris, and I'm a resident of Acakeek, Maryland. Appreciate the opportunity, Chairwoman Jacobs, Vice Chair Beck, Honorable Members of the County School Board, and Superintendent Height for allowing me to speak to you tonight. I represent myself here tonight, but more than that, I represent my children who are here with me, Faith Huesfor, I think she's here somewhere. Sometimes it's like that, and Joshua, too, who are going to be future students in your schools. If you're prospective, well, first of all, I want to give a shout out to the ROTC students who are here as well because although I hadn't planned on saying it, I come from the small town of Ephraim Washington, and I was the first student from my high school ever to attend an Ivy League school courtesy of a ROTC scholarship. My mom was a homemaker. Thank you. My dad was a teacher in the schools for 30 years. You can understand why they couldn't afford tuition at Cornell. So ROTC is a very important program, and it does groom future leaders, and I am a living example of that. If you are a prospective parent like me now, however, and I'm not sure if any of you are, then you would understand the anxiety I feel about placing my children in the kind of classroom that we're facing right now. Given the resources and compensation we are providing to our teachers who do the heavy lifting every day, I'm not sure our budget represents our public commitment to making sure that our children come first. If we are truly linking our budget to our stated goal of putting children first, then that's where the bulk of our money needs to go, whatever we have. Classrooms come first, and everything else is secondary. Some of you may have heard, I recently did a little research on the salaries of our administrators outside the classroom. Just last week, a speaker stated that 723 staff make more than $100,000. And of that amount, Dr. Height reported back that just 51 employees are directly involved in educating our children. I dug down even further requesting individual employee salaries within just one of our four human resources divisions, as noted on pages 167 through 178 of the school budget documents. While I didn't have time to scour the entire 316 pages, obviously, what I did discover within those 11 pages really disturbed me. We were paying $75,000 to data entry clerks, $90,000 to a secretary, more than $100,000 to several mid-level bureaucrats. The division employs a director for 41 employees with three additional supervisors underneath her. Meanwhile, my future kindergarten student can only expect a teacher to supervise, one teacher to supervise her class of 30 or more five-year-olds. So where are our priorities? Her teacher can only hope to make over $100,000 after acquiring a master's degree and several years of teaching experience. So where do our priorities really lie? I don't bring this up to shame our hardworking HR employees, but to point out the disparity in spending on administrative salaries versus those of our teachers. I wouldn't expect our human resources staff to recommend cuts to their own salaries. That requires the courage of our elected officials. And I know I have to wrap up because I'm a local government employee myself, so I won't take any more of your time. But my husband and I are both public servants who have endured furloughs, increased healthcare costs, no pay raises, and no cost of living increases over the past three years. We're Ivy League-educated, highly experienced professionals who could certainly work elsewhere. We chose public service because we love it. And our teachers love to teach, but we need to help them do their jobs the best that they can.
Tommy Makula. Tommy Makula.
Good evening. My name is Tommy Makula. I live in Acakeek in southern Prince George's County, and my son attends third grade in Acakeek Academy. We are new residents of the county, and this is my son's first year in the academy. I must admit that my wife and I, we were a bit apprehensive about the idea of our son attending Prince George's County schools. However, so far, we've been impressed with the academic rigor at the academy, at least when it comes to our son's teachers this year. In addition, we've been extremely impressed with the musical instruction provided at the academy. The school choir directed by Dr. Richards is quite something if you haven't heard them. I urge you, the Board of Education, to use sensible priorities as you try to adjust to the current budget constraints. No matter what happens, I understand that some painful cuts must be made, but I hope the board will focus on minimizing adverse impacts on academic instruction by the district. In addition, I hope the musical programs offered by the district will be reserved to the extent possible. But since I realize there are some, some things got to give, so I, as my two cents worth on this, I, on the other hand, see the school sports programs. I don't see them as being central to the district's mission. It pains my heart as a big, big, as a, as a big sports fan, but that's not how I see it. There are many opportunities for interested students to get involved in sports outside the school system, and I do understand, as we've heard today, that some parents likely disagree with my view on this. I also want to, actually, I think I just discovered the person who dug up the information. It was posted on a blog about the administrative costs that just the previous speaker spoke about. That analysis truly disturbs me. The information about the data entry personnel making an average of $64,000 a year when the, when the new teacher with the bachelor's degree only earns $47,000. That is just wrong. I, as a former public sector employee myself, I don't want to disparage administrative personnel, and I'm sure there are nuances and details unknown to me in these figures. However, I do believe that this type of information should force the board and the Superintendent to look below the surface when it comes to administrative costs and operations in the school district. I also encourage the board to approach a county council regarding budget priorities. I know you have connections better than I do. Frankly, I am embarrassed to live in a county that provides unmatched trash collection service but plans draconian cuts for its schools. Far to move into Prince George's County, I have lived in several other jurisdictions. Never before have I lived in an area that provides trash collection service twice a week, three times if you, and I can attest that these other communities do not suffer from any sanitation problems, so. Thank you for your time. I appreciate your commitment.
Cheryl Crosby.
Good evening. Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to speak. My name is Cheryl Crosby, and I have my son here with me, Kevin Crosby. I have another son this evening also who attends Gwin Park High School. He's in ROTC. This son happens to attend Acakeek Academy, has been there since the first grade, is now a seventh grade student, has been in the TAG program, and has won many awards at the county level, both, he is also a member of honors band for Prince George's County. And I want to say he learned how to become proficient in reading music and playing music at, I'd say, really at a professional level. We just went to a concert that he was at, and it was through the Prince George's County Public School System that he learned these things. Also, I'm so glad that he has been able to participate in the TAG program since the second grade, and it's been very beneficial for him to be able to be in an all-day program versus just a partial program where he has certain hours where he's been able to do that, and that has allowed him to qualify, and he has participated in the Johns Hopkins program for, for talented youth. And I don't think he could have done that, quite frankly, had it not been for the excellent programs that are offered through the Prince George's County Public School Systems. There are just so many programs, but I also wanted to say, just listening in awe to the many ROTC students from across the county, how deeply touched I am by their testimonials. And I have a son who actually, I was hoping he would be here tonight, but he had a fever, and I pressed my way anyway, and we said we would represent you, David. But anyway, I have, he had had some troubles, quite frankly, in the system, but since he has been in ROTC, we have seen continual improvement. Last semester, or last quarter, for the first time in high school, he made honor roll. He, he almost made honor roll this time. He missed it by one, by one grade, but he is determined to make honor roll this quarter. And I want to say how impressed I am. I had a chance to sit in on the ROTC class on Monday, and I want to say what I really appreciate about ROTC is how accountable they hold you. And he had a little bit of trouble in his class, and the teacher called me and his sergeant, or I don't know all the ranks. But anyway, I went and I was so blessed because it reminded me of old school, oftentimes in church, when somebody would call you out, tell your mother or your father something, and it would keep you on the narrow path. And I said, "Thank you for that. Thank you for that." And so you can see from the trend of all the various students that have come forward, let's not take away something that is really, truly changing people's life over time. It's a process. It takes time. Let's not cut something that's a good thing.
Colonel Harvey.
Good evening, Board Members, Dr. Height, parent supporters, and most of all, our wonderful students from the various junior ROTC detachments and units throughout this county. I am Lieutenant Colonel P. Lee Harvard, the Senior Aerospace Science Instructor at the Charles Herbert Flowers High School. I want to talk this evening about something you've all heard a few minutes about. The central theme, what I've heard this evening is, if it's not broke, don't fix it. Now, let me add to that. Each student that has come up here and said, "Do not take away something that's working." I'd like to have all of the instructors of the junior ROTC departments throughout this county to stand up. I want you to see the faces of these folks. What do we all have in common? Our love for children and teaching the values that we learned, whether in junior ROTC at an early age or during our military years in the service of our country. I come before you to address the importance of junior ROTC programs and their impacts, and their impact on the lives of young men and women who we call our country's most treasured resources. This program we call junior ROTC has allowed me and other junior ROTC instructors to be significant role models, tutors, mentors, to thousands of these young future leaders of our nation. I realize you have a tough, a tough task of finding ways to reduce the seemingly insurmountable budget deficit that currently exists here in Prince George's County Public Schools. But that is not what I'm here really, to talk about that. I would hasten to add that, that you not cut from a program such as junior ROTC, well, there's nothing but success stories throughout our programs. Students who know no other teachers, students who know other teachers wanted them in their classrooms were sent to junior ROTC. Why? Because we have what it takes to get them back on track. We have some of the students that are from IB programs, Advanced Placement programs, but we also have a significant number of those students who nobody wanted to what? Be in their classes. They were what? Getting in trouble. ADHD, all kinds of problems, IEP, 504s. We've taken these students and molded them to the future leaders of this country. Thank you very much.
David Kahn.
Good evening. You've got a tough job. I'd like to suggest two areas where I think you can save quite a bit of money. I have three concerns about equity, but first I want to say I do support the add-back of the stipends for our nationally certified teachers, at least to the $2,000 level where they can get matching funds from the state. These are the best of the best. We need them more than they need us. On the media specialist, I support the balanced workloads that you were talking about, Ms. Beck, rather than having some having a whole high school or two high schools and others having just a couple of elementary schools. Another area, I hope you don't have any fund balance projected in this budget, but maybe we need to start in fiscal 11 right now to build a small fund balance up that can be used next year. To save some money, and this is radical, but I suggest that you dissolve the high school consortium and put the high schools back in the geographical areas. You won't save 100% of the money that's being spent for that right now. Some aspects still will have to be done, but if you can save a few million dollars, we could use it. Secondly, take a look at the outside contracts. There are some wonderful programs that we could do without, and some of them are multi-year. I imagine they can be canceled with the convenience of the district. I have three concerns about equity. One is on the evening high school. I'm particularly concerned about the young people, and some not quite so young people who are not registered in other schools. I'm less concerned about those who are using it to advance, although it, it does come to mind that if they can graduate a year early, we save $8,000 and some odd dollars on them, but the, these young people deserve to have an education just as much as anybody going to school during the day. I don't even like charging them $100 for it. As far as the online learning, that may work for some people, but it doesn't work for a whole lot of people, and these are largely people who have a lot of other stresses. Some of them aren't good learners, some have dropped out and come back in. We need teachers to teach them. In the specialty programs, transportation, we're going to turn the specialty programs into Haven into havens for affluent families. That's not what we want. We have got to make transportation available to specialty programs for children. If you want to charge it, charge for the transportation, and then back that charge out for people of limited means, that might be okay. I'm also surprised that you're favoring IB over TAG, because TAG is more basic. Just let me say one more thing. I like the idea of funding Head Start as much as we can, even if we have to back funds out of the general pre-K, because that's, again, an equity issue. We're reaching more kids of limited means. Thank you very much.
Teresa Saunders.
Of course, I don't have a lengthy prepared speech tonight. Then, I'm Teresa Saunders, President of the PTA Council. We spoke the other evening about our position on the budget, and we had asked that just everyone keep their eyes on the prize when looking at the cuts and allocations. I want to thank and commend our youth that came out here today. I think they were eloquent, they were respectful in presenting their positions, et cetera. And so, I think also for all of us in this room, parents, guardians, et cetera, we all know that our number-one priority in life is our children and their future. And I think to that extent, as I said, including the Board of Education, Dr. Hyatt, et cetera. To that extent, sometimes it's easier for us to make that point physically, because we have to start at the top of the spectrum and the top of the ladder. The top of that spectrum here for us is not just here, it's at the state and in Annapolis. Six months ago, when Governor O'Malley, his first priority was being re-elected, and therefore, he came to our county, he talked to us, he asked for our support and for our votes, because I believe we're about the third-largest county in the state. So what we may need to do is go to Annapolis and make our priority known. So my purpose here today is to let you know, on February the 21st, we want everybody to join us and get on the bus. Okay? The school board has already indicated that they will assist us with transportation. Dr. Hyatt's office has already indicated they will assist us with the communications to everyone, to let them know, because we understand this is a short turnaround. And for those who don't quite understand, because I had a little education myself, that funding for us only comes 99%, and correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, from the state. There are some jurisdictions, several that I was familiar with, who can raise their own revenue and target it for education. Virginia targets a percentage for the lottery. New York, in certain jurisdictions, targets and can raise their own funds. Okay? Other areas in the South can do the same. But there is a law that prevents us from doing that, which is something we may have to work on later. Okay? Therefore, for now, we need to let them know, just as their priority was getting our votes, our priority is funding education for our children, so that they can be competitive when they graduate. So if you recall, two dates we have are February 21st. The times and specifications and details will be sent later. February 21st, which is a holiday, we want to get on that bus. And also, this weekend on February 12th, for anyone that can come out, particularly the students, the delegation from Prince George's County will be at the Community College. We're trying to organize students to speak to them at the college on this Saturday. We know it's a quick turnaround, but we've asked for the systems and school system and the Board to help us get that word out.
My apologies, Audrey Huber.
Thank you. Audrey Huber. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Education and the Superintendent. My name is Audrey Huber. I teach full-time pre-K at Laurel Elementary School, and I'm very proud to do so. 90% of the brain growth occurs between the ages of zero and five years old, yet 90% of all public funding for children is dedicated to children over the age of five. This quote is coming from the Five-Year Action Plan for the State of Maryland. Pre-K students deserve a full day's worth of education. In my classroom, my paraprofessional and I use every minute of every day for the betterment of our students. Our students learn their letters and sounds, mastery of English language for both English and English-as-a-second-language learners. They learn math concepts such as numeral identification, addition, subtraction, sorting, et cetera. They also learn the fine motor skills such as cutting, writing their first and last name correctly. In pre-K, they also learn about what is right and wrong, being fair, sharing, using your words instead of hitting. All lessons learned are either to become a better learner or a better citizen. By the end of the year, with a full-day program, I have consistently been able to have at least two students each year reading on a Level 2, and at least three students each year reading on a Level 1. They do not need to be on a Level 4 until the end of kindergarten. Many of my English-as-a-second-language students are tested out of the ESOP program by the end of pre-K, as well as they're on the independent level. I always say, I try to put them out of business. If our school day is cut in half, I do not feel it would be enough time given to meet the needs of all of our learners, especially our advanced students. Pre-K, I do feel... In pre-K, I do feel I do my best, but it's hard to fit all of it in, even now, without very careful planning and integrating all subject areas. With our English-language learners, they would suffer the most. Since pre-K is the only grade without current ESOP support, other than the teachers that teach the grade itself, where would those students who are learning this English for the first time practice the new language skills, since their time would be cut in half? Four-year-olds need more time to open up and feel more comfortable with the new adult that they're learning from. A full-day program provides this for them. A couple questions I'm also asking myself is, wouldn't it cost more money to have a half-day program, since we would have to pay for buses to bring them home in the half-day? Also, have bus personnel, extra gas money? Also, every year, my school has a waitlist for pre-K. And recently, I had an email sent... We all had an email sent that was saying that projective growth in pre-K would be expanding. So shouldn't we be expanding pre-K? Last thought was, pre-K program allows us to identify families who need food, clothing, and shelter earlier. This helps children's physical and mental growth. I know I'm comfortable with the fact, knowing that my school is feeding our children two healthy meals a day. Thank you.
Allison Sowers. Sowers.
It was the first time.
Okay. I thought it was like Powers, so Sowers.
Yep, you've got... Oh my, you guys have an arduous job ahead of you. But these young people who spoke tonight, they're just so elegant. It was just so wonderful to be here. It just makes me proud.